At this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Presente.
Botcher.
Present.
Brennan.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban. Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks Powers.
She identified herself as present earlier.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Marado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Ose.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Wrestler. Riley. Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
One.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Zhuang.
Here.
Vorelli. Vorelli. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Franco Harris of Mount Olivet Baptist Church of Hollis, which is located at two oh two dash zero three Hollis Avenue in Queens.
Lord, on today, we thank you for another day that we've never seen before and we will never see again. Help us to take advantage of the time that you have given to us and make the world that we live in a better place. We ask that you will be with our city leaders and officials as they make decisions and policies for the people of this great city. We ask that you meet the needs of this city and multiply our resources, that there is no lack in any area. We also ask that you give us good health, abundant finances, and astute cognitive ability to navigate the vicissitudes of life. We acknowledge that we are better together, and we strive to live in peace and harmony with one another. Help us to be a support system for one another when we are in need and to share our surplus with individuals that may lack. Thank you that our best days are ahead of us, and we need shades to see this bright future. The Lord bless thee and keep thee. The Lord make his face to shine upon thee and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee and give thee peace. And everyone said, amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Natasha Williams to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It is my honor to introduce a remarkable leader and community servant, Pastor Reverend Dr. Franco Harris of Mount Olivet Baptist Church in St. Albans, who is originally from Montgomery, Alabama, the birthplace of the civil rights movement, was raised with strong faith by his parents, beacon and missionary Eddie F. Harris. Pastor Harris now calls Mount Olivet Baptist Church in Hollis Queens home. A talented musician, Dr. Harris received a full scholarship to Alabama A and M University, where he excelled in music and performance. Yet feeling a divine calling to ministry, he went on to earn advanced degrees in religious studies and worship, including a doctor of ministry. His electrifying preaching and dedication have grown Mount Olivet in membership and spirit. In addition to his pastoral work, Dr. Harris founded Fame, Franco's Academy for Music Education, to promote music education for inner-city youth alongside his wife Valerie, a New York City teacher, and their two children. He continues to uplift and inspire the community. He's also a constituent, and we love Mount Olivet Baptist Church as they continue to be a pillar of the southeast Queens community under his dutiful leadership. So please join me in welcoming Pastor Reverend Dr. Franco Harris as he leads us in today's invocation, or as he led us. And with that, I will make a motion to spread today's invocation on the record.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Chiose.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
M seventy-nine, Corporation Council appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Positions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Last week, voters across our city, state, and nation took to the polls to make their voices heard. It's important that we acknowledge the real fear and anxiety that people are feeling about the results of the presidential election. While respecting the results of an election and the peaceful transfer of power, we must remain vigilant to prevent the potential negative impact a second Trump presidency could mean for the protection and progress of civil rights. While I am disappointed by the outcome of the election, we remain prepared to protect New Yorkers and our diverse city. Our city has consistently persevered in the face of adversity, and this will be no different. We emerge stronger by standing together. And by working to protect each other, we can safeguard our rights and our shared values. Let me also say this: New York City is a city of immigrants. We are home to rich immigrant communities who built our city and power its economy, and New York City will continue to be a beacon for them. We are also proud to be a safe haven for abortion and reproductive care, which New Yorkers affirmed by overwhelmingly approving Proposition One, the Equal Rights Amendment. With their vote, New Yorkers enshrined our reproductive and civil rights into the state constitution, ensuring that access to life-saving health care is protected in New York. It is also noteworthy that Proposals two through five passed with the narrowest margin of any New York City ballot proposal in at least fifteen years. The mayor's recent Charter Revision Commission composed solely of his appointees, rushed the process to put Proposals two through six on the ballot without any meaningful input or consideration from New Yorkers. This hasty process undermined the public's ability to engage with these proposals, then used misleading language imposing the questions to voters. New Yorkers deserve more transparency and respect for democracy than was characterized by those proposals and the commission that created them. My bill to establish a charter revision commission is aimed at restoring these democratic norms that were undermined last summer, as well as the trust in city government that has been harmed by the events of the past several months. Local elections matter and have a profound impact on our lives. I thank New Yorkers for getting out to vote, and will always encourage all of our neighbors who can vote to exercise that right. The council will continue to prioritize the protection and strengthening of democracy, civil rights, and safety in our city, ensuring the dignity of all New Yorkers is upheld as we continue working towards a more equitable future for all. On October twenty-fourth, a fifty-six-year-old woman passed away in a deadly fire in Councilmember Williams' district. A sixty-four-year-old man was also killed after a fire broke out at NYCH's Frederick Douglass Houses in Councilmember Abreu's district. That same day, another fatal fire took place in Councilmember Felice's district, leaving a thirty-four-year-old man dead and another one injured. This marks the fifth death due to a lithium-ion battery fire this year. While the council has passed key legislation to regulate the licensing and sales of lithium-ion batteries, we know more must be done to prevent these fires and achieve the safety that New Yorkers deserve. Earlier this month, there was yet another fatal fire, taking the lives of two New Yorkers in Councilmember Williams' district. Losing someone you love is devastating. My prayers are with all of the grieving families, neighbors, and victims, and friends of the victims. November is Puerto Rican Heritage Month. I want to honor the many contributions and accomplishments of our Puerto Rican communities who helped shape our city into what it is today. Join us for our Puerto Rican Heritage Chamber event next Monday, November eighteenth, in honor of the late and beloved Carlos Carreño Higgins. Carlos served the council for twenty-five years, joining as a member of central staff in nineteen ninety-nine, and working for every speaker in the city's history. He was the heart of our Community Engagement Division, and most recently served as co-director of the Community Outreach Unit. Carlos was deeply proud of his beloved Puerto Rico, and he channeled that love into improving his community. Carlos lived by the code that we should strive to lead a better place, a place better than we found it, and he always did just that. November is also National Native American Heritage Month when we uplift the history and cultures of indigenous peoples. It's critical that we recognize that we are currently in the homeland of the Lenape. As a city and country, we must commit to meeting the needs of our indigenous communities and confronting the disparities they continue to face. I want to acknowledge November also as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. This disease affects more than six million Americans. It's critical that we recognize them and all families and caregivers who support their well-being. Thank you to our committee chair on aging, Councilmember Crystal Hudson, for all you do to advance the care for older adults in our city. On November eleventh, we observed Veterans Day. I thank all of our veterans for their widespread contributions to our country. My father, my father-in-law, and my husband all served in the United States Air Force. So this is a very important day for my own family, as it is for all families of veterans. November nineteenth is World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims, when we remember the victims of traffic violence. We lose too many residents to preventable traffic crashes each year, which underscores the importance of the work ahead to make our streets safer for pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, and all road users alike. On November twentieth, our nation will observe Trans Day of Remembrance, which honors those we have lost to anti-trans violence. As a city, we remain focused on supporting and uplifting all LGBTQIA+ New Yorkers. And finally, I want to wish a happy birthday to Councilmembers Kevin Riley and Keith Powers, who share a birthday on the sixteenth. Happy birthday, and they're sitting together. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. Resolution six twenty-seven, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan, will set the date, place, and time for a public hearing on legislation to increase the annual expenditure for nine business improvement districts. Resolution six thirty, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, will set the date, place, and time for a public hearing on legislation to increase the annual expenditure for the Madison Avenue Business Improvement District and amend the district's plans method of assessment. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan authorizing a forty-year Article eleven tax exemption for the preservation of seven affordable senior housing buildings in Councilmember Rivera, Menon, and Powers districts. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan authorizing a forty-year Article eleven tax exemption for the preservation of one HDFC co-op building in Councilmember Abreu's district. And a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we will vote on the mayor's appointments of Michael Espiritu and Vanessa Rodriguez as directors of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. We will also vote on the following land use item. The council will approve La Catrina's application for a revocable consent to operate a sidewalk café in Councilmember Holden's district. And today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution four forty-one, sponsored by Councilmember Kristi Marado, would designate March twenty-ninth annually as Vietnam Veterans Day in the city of New York in honor of the bravery and sacrifice of the Americans who served and in recognition of the past and present dedication of their families and their caregivers. We thank you to our staff member Regina Paul. Resolution ninety-five, sponsored by Councilmember Shahan Hanif, would call upon the New York City Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity, and to provide professional development focused on religious diversity for teachers, staff, and administrators. Resolution thirteen, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would designate the second Friday in March annually as Social and Emotional Learning Day in the city of New York. We thank our staff member Chloe Rivera. Introduction six sixty-three A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, would empower the Department of Transportation to set standards for the size, shape, and materials of news racks. This bill would also restrict news racks from being placed too closely to city infrastructure located on sidewalks. We thank our staff members Mark Chen and David Lowenstein. Introduction one thirty A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would expand the council's organic waste diversion efforts specifically in parks by requiring the Department of Parks and Recreation to establish composting facilities for plant waste within at least two parks in each borough by July twenty-two thousand and sixty-six, and at least three parks in each borough by July twenty-two thousand and twenty-seven, and at least five parks in each borough by July twenty-two thousand and twenty-eight. We thank our staff members Chris Cessari, Satori, and Patrick Mulvahill. Next, introduction ten eighty-eight A, my bill to establish a Charter Revision Commission that prioritizes improving city government and transparency. The commission would consist of seventeen members appointed by the speaker, mayor, public advocate, comptroller, and all five borough presidents. Registered lobbyists would be ineligible to serve on the commission. The commission would be required to conduct an extensive outreach campaign to solicit ideas from civic and community leaders and encourage the public to participate in the hearing process. In contrast to the mayor's commission that rushed completion of the process in less than two months, the proposed legislation would provide at least eight months for the commission's work before its earliest submission of proposals for a general election in two thousand and twenty-five, and up to twenty months for the two thousand and twenty-six general election. Through an open, transparent, and inclusive process, it will actively seek input from across communities, ensuring that proposed changes to the city charter, our constitution, reflect the needs and priorities of the public. This commission will have the time and mandate to focus on the long-term well-being of the entire city, not the short-term political gains of any current office holder. The main goal of this commission is to rebuild New Yorkers' confidence in city government and reestablish model standards for these commissions. We thank our staff members, J. S. Three Canapathy, David Seitzer, and Erica Cohen. And introduction three sixty A, also known as the Fair Act, sponsored by Councilmember Chiose, would ensure that renters are not forced to pay a fee for the services of a real estate broker they did not hire. It would prohibit brokers from passing their fee onto tenants when the broker is exclusively representing the landlord's interests. Landlords or their agents would be required to disclose the fees that the tenant must pay in their listings and rental agreements. The Department of Consumer and Worker Protection would enforce this bill and would conduct education and outreach. Any person who violates this bill would be subject to a civil penalty or civil action. We thank our staff members, Rachel Cordero, David Seitzer, Natalie Melzer, and Sarah Swain. Thank you very much for your attention, colleagues. Now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Ose.
Thank you very much. I'm calling your attention to number one thirty A, which is on the agenda today. It will establish composting facilities in city parks to manage plant waste sustainably, modeled after the Riverside Park composting facility, which is so fabulous that people come just to see it, and it is powered by solar. This initiative aims to reduce the amount of organic waste sent to landfills, improve soil health, and decrease greenhouse gas emissions, create green jobs, because you'll have to have jobs to operate the sites. The implementation plan calls for at least one compost facility in two parks per borough by July twenty-six, one compost facility in three parks in each borough by July twenty-seven, one compost facility in five parks in July twenty-eight. Definitely want to thank Parks Chair Shekhar Krishna and the Compost Coalition, like Eric Goldstein of NRDC, Justin Green, a big reuse, and my staff, certainly Shuler Pooter and Cynthia Hornig, and council legislation staff Patrick Mulvahill and Chris Sartori. And I say, go compost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ose, followed by Botcher.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to speak about Intro three sixty A, or the Fair Act. Today is the culmination of over a year and a half of work. My team and I collaborated with renters, councilmembers, lawyers, workers, brokers, and so many more individuals and groups to create this piece of legislation. We built a coalition spanning the five boroughs who recognize the gravity of the housing crisis we face and are committed to finally bringing fairness to apartment rental expenses. The Fair Act is simple. It requires that whoever hires a broker in a rental transaction, whether landlord or tenant, pays the broker fee. In too many millions of cases across our city and decades of history, tenants have been forced to hand over thousands of dollars in fees to brokers they never hired nor wanted. The harm of this practice cannot be overstated. Families seeking to grow forego having children because they can't afford to move into a larger place. Children aging out of their parents' homes are pushed into different neighborhoods or even cities because they can't afford to rent an apartment in their own community. Workers are unable to live near their jobs. Victims are unable to leave domestic abuse. People are unable to bring their talent and drive to our amazing city because of forced broker fees. Today, we end that cruel and archaic practice. I want to thank Speaker Adams, as well as advocacy groups, unions, my colleagues, and everyone else who got us to this moment. Of course, Sarah Swain, Legislative Counsel, Natalie Melzer, Policy Analyst, Rachel Cordero. And in addition to that, today is a win for the people of New York as we make official what has long been common sense: you get what you pay for, and you pay for what you get. I urge all my colleagues to vote yes on this bill.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Botcher.
Today, we're passing legislation to address those plastic sidewalk newspaper boxes. This is something that New Yorkers, we've got a love-hate relationship with them in true New York fashion. We love having easy access to free periodicals on the sidewalk. We don't love that they're frequently neglected, vandalized, broken, filled with garbage, tipped over, causing sidewalk congestion and just plain eyesores. And many of them aren't even for newspapers, but promotions for commercial enterprises. Until now, the city hasn't had many tools to address this issue because the current regulations don't empower them to. So today, we're voting on city council legislation that will clarify and strengthen the regulations regarding the siding, design, and maintenance of sidewalk news racks. This will empower the DOT to develop standards regarding where they're placed, installed, design standards, size, shape, and appearance. It also clarifies that they shouldn't be used just for news advertising and promotional purposes. The owners of the news racks will have to identify, affix contact information so we know who to call when they're not being properly maintained. I want to thank Speaker Adams, Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, Sandra Ung, the prime cosponsor of this legislation, and all the organizations and residents who came forward to help support this legislation. Together, we'll keep working to improve life for New Yorkers in ways large and small.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro three sixty A, Rental Real Estate Broker Fees.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Reso six twenty-seven and six thirty, Business Improvement Districts.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso six forty-one, Organization Funding.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU one eighty-nine, and Reso six forty-six, and pre-considered LU one ninety, and Reso six forty-seven, Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intro ten eighty-eight A, Charter Revision Commission.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU one sixty-one through LU one seventy-two, on page six, Various Applications.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seventy of the New York City Charter.
LU one eighty-eight and Reso six forty-eight, Sidewalk Cafe.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro one thirty A, Composting Facilities.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, Pre-considered Reso six forty-three, approving the designation for appointment of Michael Espiritu, Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso six forty-four, approving the designation for appointment of Vanessa Rodriguez, Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro six sixty-three A, News Rack Requirements.
Amended and coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Joseph.
Aye and all.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye and all, with the exception of three sixty A, for which I am a no.
Aviles.
Aye and all.
Ayala. Thank you. Banks.
Aye and all.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye and all.
Brooks Powers. On behalf of Majority Whip Brooks Powers, I am disclosing for the record that the NYC Department of Education is funded in the transparency resolution we are adopting, and my child and sister are associated with that entity. Councilmember Brooks Powers? We'll come back to Councilmember Brooks Powers. Caban. Carr.
I vote no on Intro three sixty A, and I own the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Feliz.
Permission to explain my vote? Granted, maybe. Maybe not. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Proud of all, aye on all, especially proud to vote yes on the broker bill, a bill that is based on good policy and based on common sense. Anytime we talk about any industry, an individual selling or renting a product, generally it's that individual doing the renting or the selling of that product who would pay for the advertisement of that product. How is it possible that in the city of New York, a city where we're clearly in a well-documented housing crisis, we're going to put additional obstacles on those that want to rent? We need to make sure that we create a better housing system for everyone, including for low-income families that are struggling to find an apartment, for that reason and for many other reasons, proud of vote aye on that broker bill and on all, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Ose on getting that to the finish line.
Thank you. Councilmember Brooks-Powers, once again, I'll read, or disclosure, I'm disclosing for the record, NYC Department of Education is funded in the transparency resolution we are adopting, and my child and sister are associated with that entity. Councilmember Powers, how do you vote? For the record, Majority Whip Brooks-Powers has signaled her affirmative vote remotely. Thank you, Councilmember. Feel better. Gennaro.
Madam Majority Leader, I wish to speak on my vote.
Permission granted.
Thank you. I'm a proud cosponsor of the Speaker's Bill 1088A. I wish to be associated with her good remarks on that bill. This will be an opportunity to right a really horrendous wrong, and I urge everyone to support this good bill and to be vigilant as we go forward to protect the, to protect the integrity of this institution. Thank you very much. Oh, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
I vote aye. Congrats to all my colleagues, especially Councilmember Ose. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye on all. Congrats.
Hanks.
Aye on all, and congratulations, Councilmember Ose.
Holden.
Aye on all.
Hudson.
Aye on all. Congratulations to Councilmember Ose and to all New Yorkers who will now avoid paying a broker fee bill, a broker fee that they didn't hire a broker for.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 360A.
Marte.
I vote aye on all. Congrats to you.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to say thank you. Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, Madam Speaker. 1088, people probably don't understand why I clap, because it's so important to have all our community involved in the process of democracy. Democracy is not one person. I came from a country that was still struggling for democracy, and when I see democracy, I enjoy it, every second of it. I probably kind of overdo it at times. I was on the street to educate people. People need to be part of government. We have it right here, because that's the way we have to live our lives. And for all the legislative staff that worked on it, that pushing us to do it every day, remind us that we are here for the people, for the work of the people. So I want to vote aye, and congratulations to all my colleagues and Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye.
Ose.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Aye on all, and I want to add that today is a win for all New Yorkers and proof of what progressive governance can accomplish. Finally, after over a year and a half of work, after a seemingly endless fight against a relentless and ruthless real estate lobby hell-bent on fleecing the people of our city, we passed the Fair Act. Housing is the largest cost for New Yorkers and our number-one political concern. For too many decades, tenants have been forced to hand over thousands of dollars in fees to a broker they never hired or asked for, straining their budgets and restricting their freedom of movement. This paradigm has always been unacceptable, and now we vote for it to end. This victory did not come easy. Again, we built a coalition of labor unions, advocacy groups, electeds, New Yorkers of all backgrounds, and, yes, even brokers. We mobilized the people through a social media campaign that garnered millions of impressions, providing, improving the potential for a new and more democratic era of mass politics, and we won through unity. I want to thank Speaker Adams, Jeremy John, and Councilmembers Shawna Abreu and Oswald Feliz for their early belief in this project, and all of my colleagues in this body. I also want to thank the unions, groups, and every organization whose advocacy made this possible, and of course, I wouldn't be here without my staff. I want to thank my former Chief of Staff, Naomi Hopkins, who was there when we launched this campaign, and my current Chief of Staff, Arlene Gillen, who was here to finish it. Thank you to my Legislative Director, May Vutrapong Vitana, who shepherded this bill through the council, and thank you to my Director of Communications, Elijah Fox, who crafted and executed the communications, political, and social media strategy that won this fight against a million-dollar lobby and for the people of our city. We fought for New York, and today, we win for New York. This one's for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Palladino.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Sorted.
Thank you. I vote aye on all, except for 360A, and here's my explanation. Let's give another side to 360A. We talk a lot here about the affordability crisis, yet here we are with yet another law that will only make life more expensive. In the end, these fees aren't going anywhere. They are now just going to be built into rents, and rents will go up as a result, all while hurting small businesspeople in this city who make their living helping tenants find housing. This bill will force thousands of housing units to go unadvertised, greatly limiting transparency and cutting the general public off from potential housing opportunities. Because new units will not be advertised and the limitations placed on them by this new law, potential tenants won't have the leverage to negotiate the best possible deal between competing brokers. This will fundamentally break the rental market, driving up prices and limiting availability. And then, in a few more years, we'll all sit here again and wonder why housing is even more expensive and try to pass yet another dumb command economic solution destined to fail this city. At what point is everyone here going to realize that we're only going to make things worse? I sincerely hope that the real estate industry sues to have this law stopped. Thank you.
Caban.
Congratulations to Councilmember Ose, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Powers.
I vote aye.
Wrestler.
Big muzzles and gratitude to Councilmember Ose for his leadership. Proud to vote aye on all. It's a good day for tenants in New York City.
Riley.
Just want to state for the record on transparency resolution, my, both of my daughters attend DOE school, and I vote aye on all, and congratulations to my brother, Councilmember Ose.
Rivera.
I vote aye. Congratulations to my colleagues.
Salam.
Vote aye on all. Congratulations.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Leader. I just, I just want to say, there is a saying in Spanish that is, translates to, "That person who invites pays," and that is what this bill is doing, el que invita paga, so congratulations to Councilmember Ose. You really created possibility here, and it's, it's a lesson to all of us. We can, we can build and do a lot for New Yorkers and our city. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
I would like to disclose for the record that my daughter attends CUNY and works at New York Presbyterian Hospital, and I would like to vote aye on all, and congratulations she on an amazing bill that I do not believe is dumb. Thanks.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
No on 360A, and aye on the rest.
Williams.
I would aye, and congrats, Councilmember Ose. I know you worked really hard to get this done, and I'm very proud of you.
One.
Aye on all. Congratulations to Chi Ose.
Jaeger.
Madam President, may I be excused to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you very much. Sometimes what might seem like a fair and reasonable law, a good idea, a common sense concept, is nonetheless outside the purview of this institution and this body to adopt. And that happens because we are a creature and a creation of the state of New York, and we don't have the authority, as much as we would like it, to regulate every single part of this city, notwithstanding the fact that we are the city's legislature. This is a particular example of that. New York State law, the real property law, Article 12A, regulates brokers, regulates the fees that they accept, regulates the method by which they can accept commissions, regulates their licensure. The state has opined on this topic. They've said that they will control this topic. That takes us out of the mix. It doesn't mean that we can't propose a good idea, it just means we don't have the authority legally to adopt it. And over time, over the last several years, and this time will soon come to an end, I don't, I have opined on this topic, and sometimes the courts have agreed with me, and sometimes they haven't, and we don't know what will happen, but I like to err on the side of my reading of the law. And on 1088, I can't agree that the council has the legal authority to pass this bill, so I vote no on 1088. I also vote no, I'm sorry, excuse me, on Intro 360. I also vote no on Intro 1088 for reasons that I stated five years ago on this exact topic. I don't believe we should outsource our work to a commission of players to be named later, and I think if we want to amend the charter, we ought to do it here, and we do it in every single meeting, or virtually every single meeting of this council, we amend the charter in various ways. We can do it here, we should do it here, that's what we get paid for. And I also vote no on Resos 627 and 630. You've probably tired of hearing why, but bids are taxes, and I don't like to increase taxes on New Yorkers, and I'm not going to do it now. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Juang.
Aye on all, except Intro 360. Thank you.
Borelli.
Aye on all, except 360A.
Farias.
I vote aye on all. Congratulations, Councilmember Ose.
Speaker Adams.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Leader. I would like to state for the record that my sibling works at CUNY BMCC. I forget the exact language.
Thank you for stating your disclosure.
Thank you.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of Intro 360A, which was adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, 8 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Introduction 1088A, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and Resolutions 627 and 630, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and I would like to recognize Councilmember Mamorato.
Thank you, Majority Leader. As I stated during the Veterans Committee, it's a privilege to bring this resolution forward, one that holds deep significance for me and so many in District 13. Today, we vote to designate March 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day in New York City, a gesture that may seem simple but has a profound meaning for our veterans and their families. The inspiration for this resolution came from a conversation with one of my constituents, Oscar Ruiz, at a Veterans Breakfast in Morris Park. Oscar shared with me the struggles he and so many Vietnam veterans have faced for years, especially the pain of returning home to a city that did not offer them the recognition or support that they deserved. Hearing his story was a powerful reminder that, as a city, we have the responsibility to do so much better. By designating March 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day, we're making a promise to our Vietnam veterans and their families that they, that their sacrifice, service, and resilience will never be forgotten. This day will serve as a constant reminder that New York City honors them and sees them, values them, and their contributions to our community.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank Regina Paul and my Chief of Staff, and all of my councilmembers that vote yes. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. Thank you to Speaker Adams for including Resolution 95 on today's agenda. I also want to thank the 35 sponsors of this resolution, including co-prime sponsor Councilmember Schulman and Education Chair Joseph for their support. This resolution calls on the Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity. I encourage all of my colleagues to vote in favor of Reso 95 and for New York City Public Schools to develop and implement this curriculum immediately. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the legislative documents units by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 13 designates the Second Friday in March annually as Social and Emotional Learning Day in the City of New York, and recognizing the importance of ensuring that pre-kindergarten through 12th grade public school students acquire the social-emotional competencies needed to succeed in life. Will all those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 95 calls upon the New York City Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with curriculum that focuses on religious diversity, to provide professional development focused on religious diversity for teachers, staff, and administrators, to ensure accurate classification of hate crimes in annual school reports, and immediate notification and fulfill disclosures to parents of hate crime statistics, and to ensure that schools take actions to condemn bullying and harassment based on religious clothing, food requirements, and the need for prayer space and time year round. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 441 designates March 29th annually as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of New York in honor of the bravery and sacrifice of the Americans who served, and in recognition of the past and present dedication of their families and caregivers. Will all those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Areola, then Salam.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I am proud to introduce Intro 1107, a bill aimed at expanding flexibility for our city's one- and two-family homeowners to provide short-term rentals alongside Speaker Adrian Adams and Councilmembers Narcisse and Riley. While we support Local Law 18's goal of safeguarding our housing stock, we must ensure that we are not marginalizing responsible small homeowners. These families are the backbone of our city. These are union workers, service providers, and hard-working individuals. Local Law 18 overlooked the reality faced by these homeowners, families who, like so many across the city, are now in an economic crisis. Rising costs and mortgages, coupled with the increase in lack of affordable housing, have left them struggling to make ends meet. For many short- For many, short-term rental income has become a vital resource to help cover these escalating mortgage costs. In fact, single and two-family homes now account for 66% of foreclosures in New York City, which neighborhoods like East Flappish and Carnarce seeing the highest rates of foreclosure. These homeowners are not large corporations. These are everyday families who live in diverse mixed-income neighborhoods from Crown Heights, Southeast Queens, parts of the Bronx, Harlem, and beyond. These homeowners pursuing the American dream are being held back by a policy that treats them as if they are commercial enterprises. Intro 1107 addresses these challenges, allowing homeowners to rent out their properties responsibly. We are committed to working collaboratively with the Hotel Association, unions, and advocates to ensure this legislation serves the best interests of all New Yorkers. I encourage and urge my colleagues to support Intro 1107 to keep the American dream alive in our city and to help bring urgently-needed relief to those who are struggling to maintain their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a friendly reminder for those that are remaining in chambers, if you are going to leave chambers, please do so as quietly as possible. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ariola, followed by Salam, then Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to talk about Reso 5. It was discussed yesterday at Dem Conference, and I've had conversation with some of you individually today. I'd like to take a moment to clarify the intent and content of the bill in the legislature that Reso 5 supports. As all of you know, I've been fighting for the city workers who have been unable to return to work due to inequitable practices of the New York City Law Department. Many city workers who did not take the COVID-19 vaccination were never removed from their jobs, even without reasonable accommodation requests, and others returned when the mandates were lifted without signing any waiver of their civil service rights. There is a remaining group of workers that are not being allowed to back to work without signing away their rights. There is no protocol or explanation as to why some were able to return without it and some were not. This is an unfair practice and one that we, as representatives of this city, should not be allowing to continue. Reso 5 supports legislation in Albany, A9196, that would remove this inequity. It would simply allow everyone to return to work in the same manner that others have. It is not an anti-vaccination bill, nor is it a bill that is giving the workers any back pay for days they were not working. It would just end the unfair practices of the Law Department and make sure that all workers are being treated equally. I ask you to carefully look over both pieces of legislation and reach out to me. If you have any questions, please help me right the wrong that thousands of workers are still facing. Do it for firefighter Rashad Taylor, firefighter Sekhru Abdul, paramedic Corinne Rosado, and all of the first responders and city workers that just want to return to work, many of whom have testified before this body, sharing their hardships. Thank you for the time.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Salam, followed by Narcisse, then Stevens.
Thank you. Good afternoon, esteemed members of this great legislative body and the Honorable Speaker. Today, I am proud to introduce Resolution 645, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S-182A/A710. Crucial legislation to end qualified immunity for public officials who violate constitutional rights. First, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Senator Robert Jackson and Assemblymember Pamela Hunter, who have championed this legislation in the New York State Legislature. Their commitment to justice and accountability is instrumental in advancing this important cause. I also want to acknowledge the tireless advocacy of the Innocence Project. Their work has shined a light on the barriers to justice faced by too many and has been vital in the movement to end qualified immunity. As public servants, we are entrusted with the welfare and safety of every New Yorker. Yet, that trust cannot exist without accountability. Qualified immunity has been a barrier for far too long, allowing officials to evade responsibility for actions that harm the very people they are meant to protect. This legislation represents a chance to bridge that gap. It ensures that families and individuals seeking justice have a fair hearing and that no one, regardless of position, is above the law. This resolution is not merely a policy matter, it is a moral imperative. Our communities deserve to feel safe and to trust that their rights will be upheld without exception. By supporting S-182A/A710, we affirm that public officials must meet the same legal standards as every citizen. This step forward is essential in our fight for a fair, just, and equitable society. Let us work together to build a New York that upholds justice for all. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Stevens, then Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Majority, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, I urge your support for Intro 948 and my colleague for our Louis 1107, two bills that address their urgent need, the greater housing flexibility and affordability in our city, by updating the definition of family in our building and administrative code. Intro 948 allows single individuals and families to open their homes to up to four boarders, roomers, or lodgers. Intro 1107 further enhances housing accessibility by providing additional measure to support affordable housing options to New Yorkers. These measures are small but vital steps toward alleviating housing pressure. I know that firsthand because I have a part of my district that have the highest foreclosure. Now, this is for particular communities that's facing rising costs and limited space. This bill helps ensure that our city remains adaptable to the evolving housing needs to New Yorkers. Together, this bill aims to create a more flexible and sustainable housing landscape for all New Yorkers. I respectfully ask for your support in making this much-needed changes in reality, because we know how difficult it is. We heard the bill today that it is hard for our New Yorkers. So let's make it possible and let democracy run in this chamber, too. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Stevens, followed by Sanchez, Hudson, then
It is my pleasure to introduce legislation alongside Councilmember Lee, Intro 1112, which requires each police precinct in New York City to develop and implement a special needs plan for identifying and responding to individuals with special needs, such as Alzheimer's disease, dementia, Down Syndrome, and other relating conditions. The precinct plan would include processes to identify individuals with special needs within their communities and establish a precinct-specific respond protocol for interactions with them. As a city, we need to recognize the urgent need to address mental health concerns in our community. When it comes to public safety, we should not leave it up to one agency, as we are a city with diverse needs. This legislation aims to foster a safe and more understanding environment for individuals with special needs, prioritizing partnerships between law enforcement, families, healthcare providers, and most importantly, nonprofit organizations who are on the front line and doing this work. I invite my colleagues to sign on to Intro 1112, as we must continue to take steps forward together to ensure that we create a holistic solution to keep residents safe while providing support and mental health resources for individuals with special needs. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Hudson, then Borelli.
Thank you, Madam Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce with Councilmember Hanks Intro 1110, which will require the Department of Education to annually report on safe passage routes in place at different NYC schools. Safe passage routes consist of designated walking routes established in coordination with community-based organizations or law enforcement to ensure safety of students who travel to and from school. Violence across New York City is uneven. While some parts of our city can feel like havens, others can feel like war zones. In fact, official NYPD data shows that shootings occur on the same blocks year after year. Just 4% of New York City's 120,000 blocks account for nearly all of the city's shootings, according to this data. As we continue to pursue strategies that make our community safer and make our community members feel safer, 1110 is a tool in the arsenal to protect our youngest. In Chicago, where they've had safe routes and they have analyzed the outcomes of the program because they had good data, which is what 1110 would do for us, schools that had the program for more than two years showed a 20% decline in violent crime and all crimes overall. I hope my colleagues will join me in signing on to this legislation so we can receive better data and expand use of safe passage in the communities that need this program the most.
Councilmember Hudson, followed by Minority Leader Borelli.
Thank you so much. Last session, we made tremendous progress passing our First Agent Place NYC package that included laws to expand the right to counsel for older tenants, mandate universal design and city-funded housing, and expand access to telemedicine and culturally-appropriate programming at older adult centers. These are major steps toward a more inclusive city that values its older adult population, but the fight isn't over. This session, we're pushing forward with even more critical reforms, stronger coordination across city agencies to support older adults, more options for home-delivered meals, expanded support to keep older adults connected in a digital world, and new tools to help seniors protect themselves from fraud. And we're working on policies that will help lay the groundwork for a comprehensive, universal elder care system across all five boroughs. The reality is that we would all be fortunate to age in this great city, and aging is a privilege. It's not just our responsibility to support our older adults today, but into their future. You can help protect them by signing on to the Age in Place 2.0 package. Thank you.
Thank you. Now recognizing Minority Leader Borelli.
Thank you. I rise today to offer a congratulations to a former New Yorker, President Trump, on his reelection. I want to also extend that congratulations to the new members of our House delegation, Rep. elect Gillan and Rep. elect Riley. And why do I mention those three? Because all three have committed to trying to end the cap on the salt tax. And I think if they can work together on it, certainly that's a lesson for all of us. I want to also congratulate some New Yorkers who have been asked to be in the Trump administration. First and foremost is former Rep. Lee Zeldin. I'm hopeful that, as head of the EPA, he can end the threat from this horrible scam called congestion pricing, which proves to do nothing for my community other than to add more congestion and more pollution, just as the MTA's own report. I've just found out the governor intends to reinstate it with a December 29th start date. And unfortunately, it's things like this that really validate the criticisms from the biggest cynics of government. When you scrap something before an election and then re-implement it a week later, it really does validate why people hate government just so much. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Elise Stefanic, the new UN ambassador. She's made the fight against antisemitism one of the foremost things she's done in the House of Representatives. I think the UN can use a voice like that. And actually, last but not least, we'll give a congratulations to Steve Witkoff, who is going to become the Special Envoy to the Middle East. Now, as someone who was a real estate developer and the owner of thousands of units here in New York, I think he'd see Mideast Peace as sort of a retirement job after dealing with us in the city council. I don't know about you. I don't think the ayatollah has much on Mr. Wrestler and his friends. That's a joke. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll take a moment to recognize and congratulate our Councilmember Kalman Jaeger for winning his election this November 5th as well. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you. The stated meeting of November 13, 2024 is hereby adjourned.